Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the zoning board meeting. We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Serito.
Here.
Ms. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Chabra.
Here.
Mr. Johnny.
Here.
Mr. Patel.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Devey.
Here.
Mr. Sadat.
Here.
And Vice Chair Gorman.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to approve the minutes on March 25, 2025.
Motion.
Motion by Doug.
Mr. Schneider, yep.
And second by.
Mr. Patel.
Shadad and.
Roll call.
Mr. Serito.
Yes on the motion.
Mr. Johnny.
Yes in the motion.
Mr. Chabra.
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes on the motion.
Mr. Patel.
Yes on the motion.
Mr. Devey.
Yes on the motion.
Mr. Sadat.
Yes on the motion.
And Vice Chair Gorman.
Yes on the motion.
Thank you.
Motion approved, resolution ZO1-2025.
Mr. Patel, for approval.
Motion to approve by Mr. Patel.
Second on the motion, Schneider.
Second by Schneider.
Roll call.
Mr. Serito.
Yes on the motion.
Mr. Johnny.
Yes in motion.
Mr. Chabra.
Yes to the motion.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes on the motion.
Mr. Devey.
Yes on the motion.
Mr. Sadat.
Yes on the motion.
And Vice Chair Gorman.
Yes on the motion.
Thank you.
So in reference to the carried to August 26, 2025, there'll be no renotice. Case number Z02-2020 Lamar Advertising of Penn LLC, 81 and 101 U.S. Highway 1. So anyone who's here, that will not be heard tonight, and also anyone that'll be heard on August 26, 2025, and there'll be no renotice. This is the notice. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a regular meeting of the Township of Edison Zoning Board of Adjustments. The board is composed of Edison residents appointed by the municipal council who volunteer their time in service to the board. The municipal land use law requires that members successfully complete a land use training course administered by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. This board holds an in-house training conducted by our board professionals. The zoning board also abides by the provisions of the municipal land use law in addition to our board's bylaws. The zoning board is a quasi-judicial land use board, which differs from the township planning board. Under the municipal land use law, board members are required to be impartial or not allowed to discuss any case prior to being considered at a hearing. All applicants have the opportunity to present their case before the board, along with the opportunity for board members and board professionals to question the applicant and their witnesses. At the conclusion of the applicant's presentation of the case, the case will be open to the public. Residents within 200 feet of the subject matter will be heard, followed by the residents from outside 200 feet. All residents are sworn in and will provide their name and address, and then will be given six minutes to comment on the application being considered without an opportunity for rebuttal. Residents may ask questions of the applicant, the applicant's professional, or board professionals. The board requests that questions are asked prior to any commentary being made on the application. Once the commentary begins, the reticence timer will begin. The applicant will be allowed the opportunity for cross-examination of their witness. Under the law, the chair is allowed to stop any commentary which is repetitive or an attempt to filibuster the board. Further, the chair is allowed to stop any commentary which is irrelevant to the case or prohibited by the board's consideration. Once the public portion is closed, all public comments are ended unless new testimony is present by the applicant. Following the closure of the public portion, the applicant will be given the right of summation to their application. Following the summation, the case will go to the board for a decision. This procedure has been followed by the board, and similar procedures followed by the Board of Adjustments statewide. The municipal land use law requires the board to engage in a balancing act and is not required to strictly apply township ordinances, zoning, or master plan. As a Board of Adjustment, variances are granted when the appropriate necessary following are all legal considerations. As has been the case for prior boards, this board will see where we are at in the session around 10:30 p.m. I ask that applicants, professionals, and residents show respect to each other and be civil through all proceedings. I ask that you withhold applause, booing, or interrupting anyone while they are speaking. The chair will not tolerate any outbursts by applicants, professionals, or public. Further, since most cases are being recorded by a court reporter, I ask that speakers do not speak over one another. Madam Secretary, first case on the agenda?
Case number Z23, 2024, Mayor Condowal at 41 Terry Ave. Applicant is seeking bulk variances to construct a new single-family dwelling. The following standards have not been met. Total side yard required is 18 feet. Proposed now is 16 feet. Building height required is 32 feet. Proposed is 33 feet. Max percent of lot coverage required is 23%. Proposed is 23.48%. Affected property is located in the R.B. zone designated as block number 643.22, lot number six on the Edison Township tax map. All noticing paperwork is in order.
Rachel? I just have to read one item. The Township of Edison Zoning Board of Adjustments' regular meeting is now in session. Adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meeting Act of 1975, has been provided by the annual notice published in the Home News and Tribune on December 13, 2024, and has been posted in the main lobby of the municipal complex on December 18, 2024. Thank you.
Mr. Condowal? Pull the microphone closest to you. A little bit close, and if you would raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God? Make sure that's on, and let's hear you again.
Yes.
And state your full name for the record, please.
I'm Condowal.
Okay.
Okay. So in January, I submitted the first plan. The side yard required was 18 feet. In January plan, it was proposed 14. I was asked to adjust, so we submitted the new plan, which is now 16 feet. The existing building right now has already a variance of 14 feet, so we are improving it. Building height in January meeting was 34.9 feet, required as 32. We adjusted the building height to 33 feet. Also, we removed the staircase, which was requested by one of the board members, going to the attic. Lot coverage, which is required 23 feet, in January meeting, it was 23.94. We improved that to 23.48 feet. I will request the members to approve it, and let me belt my green helmet.
Okay. Any questions? Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Deve.
I'm good.
Are there similar properties in the area that meet the same specifications as this application?
I haven't researched that, but in that area, there are multiple homes which have even less side yards.
As we discussed when you were here last time, you had mentioned it, and you didn't present any information on that, and today you don't bring any presentation that there's similar properties that meet this specification.
So I had a couple of options. Either I go and do the research and argue about it, or I improve it according to the board members. I improved it, and I resubmitted the plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Schneider.
Question. So you mentioned the existing structure is how many feet?
It is 14, so seven feet on each side, and now we are improving it to 16, so we are going to make it eight feet on each side.
Got it.
So we are improving what it exists.
Thank you.
On drawing A-1, the dimension there from the side of the house to the property line is 6.33 feet. Is that what you're proposing to do?
Six point.
Look at drawing A-1 sheet two.
That is existing.
That's the existing?
Right.
It says proposed two-story frame dwelling.
Oh, okay. Yes, that is what we want to do. Total 18 feet. A total 16 feet.
So the neighbor, so if you put the ladder, if you put a ladder along there, that ladder is going to be on your neighbor's property?
I don't think so, but the existing is, also has the similar, the footprints are there.
What is the existing?
Existing is... I don't have the papers right now in front of me, but... I think it should be in the survey.
Is it six foot and 12 feet, the way I'm reading it? Is it six foot on one side and 12 foot on the other side?
Yes.
Same drawing, right there on the top, where the existing setbacks are back on the building.
What is the, what is the existing?
18.
No, existing is 14.
Again, on drawing A-1, on your drawing, it says 6.33 feet. What is the existing? I don't know.
I don't have the survey in my hand, but it is total 14 feet. And now I'm improving it to 16.
16, you want to add these up? It is 16.
No, I understand that. I can do the math, but what is the existing size?
I don't have the.
You don't have that information?
I don't have right now in my hand.
Well, that's what we're here for, all right? All right. Is there any other questions? Okay. Any more testimony? Is it, you want to do any more presentation?
No.
Okay. Have a motion?
For neighbors or anybody outside?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Anyone within 200 feet? Seeing no one at 200 feet. Anyone out of 200 feet, out of 200 feet and further? Motion to close the public session?
Motion?
Second.
Second. Roll call. I say, the ayes have it, nays, the ayes have it. All right, need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the application. It is a very diminutive request. It is not a detriment to the neighborhood. It would enhance the neighborhood, not out of character with the neighborhood, and there are no objectors.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by... Okay, we got a motion by Devendra, seconded by Mr. Patel. So, I'm sorry, Mr. Sahada, vote, please.
Mr. Sarita?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Johnny?
Yes, in motion.
Mr. Chabra?
Yes, to the motion.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes, to the motion.
Mr. Patel?
Yes, to the motion.
Mr. Devey?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Sadadha?
Yes, to the motion.
And Vice Chair O'Gorman?
No, on the motion.
Okay.
You have six yeses. Mr. Johnny's vote does not count because we can only do seven.
He's certified.
But it doesn't count because you can only have seven votes, voting members.
You're right.
So, it's the six votes and one no.
So, it passes?
All right, good luck.
All right, good luck. Thank you.
So, is that approved?
It passes. Good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bavini.
Next case?
You scared him for a second.
Case number Z52025, Abhishek Barwaj at 8 Fielding Place. Applicant is seeking bulk variances for a single-family dwelling under construction. The following standards have not been met. Medium side yard setback required is 15 feet. Proposed is nine feet. Affected property is located in the RA zone designated as block number 557.04, lot number four on the Edison Township tax map. All noticing paperwork is in order.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Bernard Shire, firm of Convery, Convery &amp; Shire, representing the owner applicant, Abhishek Barwaj. The property is 8 Fielding Place, block 557.04, lot four, in the RA zone. This is an application for a variance for one side yard where the requirement is 15 feet and the proposed is nine feet. This is a little bit of an unusual situation as the applicant obtained a survey and the builder obtained a building permit to construct a new single-family home. However, after the foundation was in, a survey of other property showed that there were some monuments missed and that the survey obtained by the applicant was in error and that the actual side yard had a violation from 15 feet to nine feet, and therefore, the applicant had to come before this board to obtain an approval. The applicant in this matter acted at all times in good faith, obtaining engineering and surveying advice, and the builder relied on that, which he's entitled to do, and the building department relied on that in granting the building permit. Unfortunately, there was an error, as was later determined from surveys of adjacent properties. I have with me Andrew Wu, a professional engineer who can testify how this error occurred. I have Mr. Lopez, the builder, to testify as to obtaining the building permit based upon the information he had, and also, finally, Lorelei Totten, a licensed professional planner, who can testify as the justification for the board granting this variance. Unless there are any preliminary questions, I'm ready to proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Wu, can you present your qualifications?
Sir, would you raise your right hand?
Yes, my name is.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
And state your full name for the record, please.
I'm a professional engineer.
Sir, your full name for the record first, please.
Andrew Wu.
Thank you.
W U, my last name.
All right, Mr. Wu, can you just state your qualifications?
Yeah, I've been appearing from the board many times. I'm a professional engineer and a professional land surveyor, and my license is current and in good standing.
Okay, and you've been, thank you very much. We'll accept your qualifications.
Thank you.
Okay, proceed.
Mr. Wu, you're familiar with all the background of this application, is that correct?
Yes.
Could you please advise the board if there was an error made in the survey that was originally prepared for this construction?
Yes, when we prepare a survey, any survey, we do a lot of background field information. We found some property corner markers, and we also had an old survey the owner provided to us, and based on the information, we decided the boundary line, and that is number eight Fielding Place. Later on, we do another job, number four Fielding Place, which is next to number eight. We did more detailed search. We found some concrete monument, which was shown on the original file map. Based on the concrete monument, we discovered that is the curb line, they are not in line with the property line. In other words, the right away is 50 feet, and the pavement is 30 feet. So, supposed to be 10 feet from curb to the property line, 10 feet from the curb to but they are not, they are misaligned with the property line. So, we found that one, and based on the concrete monument we found, which was the original for the subdivision, we discovered our number eight Fielding Place is way too close to the sideline. And we actually, we surveyed the whole block, not only the, we surveyed the whole block. We had come to the conclusion that the building foundation is too close to the sideline. Supposed to be like 15 feet, we have nine feet.
And these markers that you referred to when you were doing the second survey were not found during the first survey, correct?
Correct.
I have no other questions, Mr. Wu.
Okay, thank you. You were the original surveyor from the application when it was submitted for a permit? You're the surveyor of record?
No, there was an old survey called Ken Hoffman, and he surveyed the property in April 2024.
Okay.
So, and he gave us the survey for reference, and his survey shows property line perfectly in line with the curb line, but based on my finding, it's not.
Is this structure up? Is this, is it up? Is the foundation in?
The foundation, at that time, the foundation already built.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, where is that survey? He's still alive?
You mean.
Where is that surveyor? Where is he?
He, I don't know if he's alive or not, but.
I mean, this is the first time I'm hearing like this kind of case where something got screwed up like this. Are you going after this surveyor? Is the building is up?
Foundation and the part of framing is up.
And as I understand, it's a precast concrete wall foundation, correct?
Yes, yes.
All right, so it can be easily corrected, no?
After the survey, I was there this afternoon. The foundation are up, and they stopped the framing.
Now, I get it, but it is not that huge expense to correct the thing. It is just the foundation walls are up on one side. You cut back one piece on both sides and move that in. It's not that difficult to correct it, no?
It is very difficult because.
Why?
It is a concrete foundation.
Yeah.
It's a poor foundation.
It is poor, or it is, I say it's a precast.
It's not like, it is a poor foundation, and the framing is also up.
So, it is precast.
Precast.
Yeah, it is not for.
Okay, okay, it's not a concrete block, it's a precast.
Yeah, the precast vertical plank.
Yes.
Okay, so you take this wall up and bring it back in at surveyor's expense, probably, I'm not sure. I mean, how difficult is to cure it?
We have the builder available to testify also.
Sure.
All right, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead. Want to get the builder? Want to bring up the builder? Any other questions before Mr. Wu?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Wu, so the plan, the survey prepared from you dated July 26, 2024. This was the original existing conditions survey prepared by you, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this was created before the property even started the construction, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, you're saying in between this July 2024 survey, some other survey came in the middle to survey the property? Is that what I'm hearing?
Before, before July 2024, there was a survey called Ken Hoffman.
Okay.
He surveyed the house in April 2024.
But what does that survey have to do with anything? Where is that survey?
I have the survey here with me. I use this one for reference.
So, yours was referenced on his?
Right. And his survey shows property line perfectly aligned with the curb line, but when I surveyed the lot number five, we found more evidence. We found the original concrete monument than I realized.
So, I'm not, again, I'm not understanding. You're going off of his points, his datum points, or you had your own points? That's what I'm not understanding.
His point is, his point was out of line.
Huh?
Yeah, the original survey, the original survey, Ken Hoffman's survey plan was incorrect.
Okay, it was incorrect, but again, your survey was created, generated after Ken Hoffman's survey.
Correct.
So, what does Ken Hoffman's survey have to do with this one?
Well.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
The, my client provided me his survey plan for reference. So, we survey, we used to have a lot of informations for reference. I use his survey plan for reference.
So, you didn't prepare your own points? Essentially, that's what I'm hearing. You used that survey?
And we found, yeah, we used that survey, and we found some other points, and we found a point, and we used that point, and his plan, and the curb to determine the location of this 8 Fielding survey map.
Again, my whole question is, this survey that you created was made off of the points that you got from him. You didn't generate your own points.
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right.
Anything else?
No.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Chairman, I have a couple of questions, just to clarify the timeline. So, the survey was produced by Mr. Hoffman in April of 2024?
Correct.
And then you produced a new survey in July of 2024?
After, yes, after Ken Hoffman, yes.
So, what happened between April and July to warrant getting a second survey? Why were there two surveys done in a couple of months?
Well, Ken Hoffman is a surveyor, but in order to do the, we need also engineer to prepare a site plan, so we needed to have a new survey, and we didn't get the information from the original survey at that time, but later on, we got the first survey's map from Ken Hoffman. And we also, when we prepare any engineering work, we like to have our own survey worked on.
So, in your line of business with surveying, is it typical that a client that's building a home would get two surveys back to back like that?
No, only one survey, but sometimes like you are a homeowner, you want me to do a survey, you say, hey, Andrew, I have a new survey, would you like to take a look at the old survey? I say, well, I can use the old survey for reference. That's what happens. I do the survey, but the client provided me with the old survey for reference.
Right, and I've done the same thing that you're describing, so I understand. So, when I sold something or bought something, I might say, hey, I have a survey from 10 years ago, but this one was from two months prior, right?
Yes.
And that must have been strange, right? Okay, so, when did construction start on the actual foundation?
That one, I have to refer to the builder.
Okay, so, is it fair to say that your survey that was produced in July was the one that was used to incorrectly put the foundation 15 feet in instead of, or six feet instead of 15, or it's a six-foot difference, right, we're talking about?
Correct.
So, that was your survey or Hoffman's survey?
That's my survey.
Okay, so Hoffman's is kind of irrelevant at this point.
Yeah, but my survey, part of my survey, used the Hoffman's survey for reference.
So, that's just explaining how you got to an incorrect survey, but the incorrect survey was yours, right?
Correct, yes.
Anything else?
No, I just want to hear from the builder when he started building based on his survey.
Okay, we'll finish, Mr. Wu. Any more questions from Mr. Wu?
Mr. Chairman, so the foundation is all complete, all four sides? Or you just realized you did that corner, and you realized that these are, this is based on wrong survey? What is the status of the foundation at this time?
The builder is my next witness. He can explain, answer all those questions.
Okay, is a next-door neighbor here whose side the setback is?
Whoa, 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 whoa. We'll hear.
I'm just asking, did you guys approach the, did you guys approach the neighbor's property, and did you talk to them that this is what has happened?
My client is here, I'll.
No, 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 you got to come up. Mr. Wu, would you let him have the microphone, or he can be up there. Where does, okay. Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Right hand.
I do.
Okay, and state your full name for the record, please.
Abhishek Barwaj.
Okay, proceed.
Okay, the question is that did your client applicant approach the next-door neighbor?
Yes, we did. You know, which side is the setback, the issue that has been discussed, the immediate neighbor we have discussed twice.
And that building is roughly 55 foot away from the property line?
Yes.
And are they okay with it?
Yeah, they don't have any objection. We have spoken to them twice.
You're going to testify, yeah, so.
Yeah.
So, I'm just going to direct that I think at some point, Mr. Shire, you'll present what we need, because that's hearsay, so obviously, you had a discussion with the neighbor, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and your understanding is it is acceptable, is that correct?
Yes, it is acceptable.
Okay, so.
All right, leave it at that, okay. Okay, and then.
Sorry, can I clarify the previous point, or is it okay?
Just a question, how far is the neighbor's house off the property line?
Off the property line, like my property line, it is around like 55 feet.
Okay.
Yes, that is their backyard.
Now, maybe he can answer the question, what the status of the foundation at this time? It's all complete?
Yeah, the foundation is laden, and we have the framing up, and the builder is here to provide all the details.
So, the all-four-side concrete walls are up? It's a precast concrete walls?
Yes.
Came in a segment, four feet or five feet wide, segment vertically set up?
That I cannot tell, but this is.
All right, I'll wait for, I'll wait for the builders.
Just one thing, because that was being discussed, I wanted to clarify that point. In April of 2024, we bought the property, and there is a regular process. While buying a property, you do their survey. At that time, we hired Ken Hoffman, and we started off with our construction plans, and all we reached out to Mr. Wu to provide and do the survey. That was the reason, you know, it was like within three months of it, we had a different survey.
Foundation was laden, now he's telling that framing is up as well. When did you realize that something is wrong? What stage?
Mr. Wu? Yeah, we surveyed next door, which is lot five, okay? Then, when we surveyed lot five, we did a more complete search. We found some original monument. We held that original monument, then we realized that is the number eight Fielding was off.
Number what?
When did you discover that, is the question?
I would say, I don't have the exact date, in the late. When did, I would say, I don't have the exact date, in the late, late end of last, last year or early this year.
So what triggered the second or third survey? Once you do the survey, building is laid out, nobody does the survey, correct? What triggered that survey that you realized that something is not right? At the first wall was laden or after foundation was complete, you kept continuing doing the framing? What state you realized that mistake has happened?
Was the, is the question, when the ser, when they realized the survey was incorrect, was the foundation and framing already done, or did they continue to work?
That one, when the, I don't have the exact date, but that one, when the foundation was done, we need to do a as-built foundation survey. When foundation complete, we need to do as-built foundation survey, then we realized the foundation is off.
Okay, so that's not a normal practice?
It's a standard practice, every time we finish a, a foundation, we need to survey the foundation, make sure it is in the right.
All right, I'll, I'll wait for the builders, all right.
Wait, wait. Say that again, what did you, so on the foundation with the survey?
When the foundation is poured or installed, we need to survey foundation to make sure it is in the correct location.
Did you, did you do that?
Yes, then at that time, we realized the foundation was off.
And, and you still kept on going, installing the framing? If you realize mistake happen, you continue install framings?
The builder can answer all those questions.
So that's why I need to wait for the builders.
So Mr. Shire, what, what we're trying to do is get a timeline here.
Right.
So we'll get the builder, but, all right?
Yes, sir.
All right, is any more, anything, any other testimony from the owner or from Mr. Wu?
Let me just ask the owner, once the discovery was made that the survey was off, did construction stop immediately?
Yes, we voluntarily stopped the construction, based on the survey that, you know, we need to go back to the board to seek the variance approval. So yes, it was immediately stopped, I think around like early January.
So you didn't pour any more foundation or put up any framing after the survey was determined to be incorrect?
Yeah, it was stopped there and there.
So, so, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
So the as-built foundation survey was done after the framing was already up? Is that correct?
Maybe a week or two weeks can get, but usually, we finish the as-built foundation first, then we do the framing.
Usually, but in this case, if it stopped immediately, once you realized it was wrong, that tells me that the foundation was there, the framing went up, you did the survey, you realized it was wrong, and then everything stopped? Is that correct?
That the builder can answer better, I, I do not do the construction.
Any, any other questions? So, so your testimony is that when, when the foundation is poured, you perform a survey? Right, and you said you'd perform the survey, but then you continued the framing? I, I don't understand the timeline. That's your testimony, correct?
No, this one, builder can better answer, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Shire, from?
None of Mr. Wu, no.
Okay.
I'm gonna call Victor Lopez.
Lopez, Mr. Shire, do you want Mr. Lopez next to you?
Yes, okay, go.
Mr. Lopez, if you would raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guys?
I do.
And state your full name for the record, please?
Victor Lopez from Victor Builders.
Mr. Lopez, what do you do for a living?
I build houses.
Okay, and were you hired by the applicant to build a house at Eight Fielding Place in Edison Township?
Yes.
All right, and in preparing to start construction, was there a survey obtained and other permits and other documents obtained in order to go to the building department to get a building permit?
Yes.
And did the survey demonstrate that there was compliance with all the zoning requirements for that area?
Yes.
You did in fact obtain a building permit from the township building department, correct?
Correct.
Now, was there ever any intent on the part of anyone not to comply with the required side yard setback requirements?
Nope.
And as, let me ask you, I, I know the board had questions. As soon as it was discovered that there was an error in the survey and there was a side yard violation, did you stop construction immediately?
Yes.
And had the framing and foundation already been put in?
Yeah, I mean, let me give you a little background, so if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so basically, I was hired by my client, Abhishek Bharadwaj, to build the house for him. So in a typical construction, the reason for the two surveys, which the engineer was referring as, the topographic survey is very critical, right? Without a topographic survey, which has the water line or the utilities and the trees locations, a regular survey doesn't have that. So that's one of the reason behind those second, again, I'm not an engineer, but I just want to give you a little background why the second survey was needed. And that's how a plot plan is created, and that's what we submitted to the zoning department, based on what was there. We did receive a construction approval on October 5th, October 25th, 2024. As the council member said, it is a superior wall, so we did the precast. We started the construction November, we started excavation, we did the superior walls end of November. And as the construction of superior wall is, we have to put the deck, that's the deck of the framing, it's not a foundation wall, so we have to put a deck as well, we have to pour the slab. So, pour the slab, so we did pour the slab, and with superior wall, you can go vertically to start the framing. So we framed only the first floor, fa, first floor exterior interior walls. The second, ceiling of the second floor is not being done. So the construction was stopped in mid-Jan, when we received, when I received a call from the engineer, we immediately stopped the construction, we immediately had a meeting with the township zoning, zoning board, Jim, and then we had a meeting with Brian, and I think that Rachel can attest to it. So we came to township, we had several meetings in the month of Jan itself, and we were suggested to go to the, to the planning board to have an approval, and that's how. But immediately when this situation was occurred, when this thing was known, we stopped the construction.
Okay, now. Have you prepared a cost estimate as to what would be entailed in removing the existing foundation or part of it and reconstruction in the correct location?
So yes, we have a cost, so the council, sir, you said, can, we can use, we cannot use the superior walls. The reason is, we already have a slab done. So those walls are not good to be reused. And the construction costs is, yes, we, you need to know the cost.
Yes, please.
It's around $230,000.
How much?
$230,000.
Do me a favor, can you move that mic a little bit closer to yourself? And speak into it, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Shire?
I have no other question to Mr. Lopez.
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, where is the side civil drawings, which dimensions, where are those drawings? Side civil drawings, where are they?
The corner markers?
The civil drawings, where you have all the utilities and side drainage and all this stuff, where is those drawing? Why it's not part of this? It should have all the dimensions, how somebody would screw up like this? I, I still don't get it. Where is the side civil drawings?
Which, which drawing are you talking about, sir?
These side engineered drawings.
I think you're referring to the plot and grading plan?
Yeah.
Which outlines the utilities and the trees.
Yeah, so how do, if you follow those drawings, there's no way you can make this kind of error.
No, this councilman, the, this error have occurred based on the survey, which was correct as of, as of Jan. So as in our minds, this survey was correct. So this, that's the survey we submitted to the township, that's a plotting grading plan, which was 15 feet compliance until they did the survey for Four Fielding Place, and they came to know there was an issue.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to see these side civil drawings.
Chairman, I have a question. So in initial survey, you mentioned there was a fall, and you find out, when you are trying to understand something, the tree related stuff. So why was not discovered in the initial plan that these are the points missing before we start building stuff?
I'm a builder, actually, this is a question.
No, I'm asking questions to everyone, not to you.
Okay.
Like, why was not discovered? Because the way, the cost you are talking about $230,000, which could be visibly noticeable, that this is not right.
Are, are you asking Mr. Lopez?
I'm asking questions, there is a gap between first survey and second survey. Why was not discovered before, before starting building your infrastructure?
I mean, that's exactly the reason we are here. The reason is, when we were building this house, Eight Fielding Place, we had no issues until the engineer started working for Four Fielding Place. And I think the owner of Four Fielding Place, which is the neighboring property, she's, I think, they are here too. So we had no clue until mid-Jan that there is an error, nobody knows it.
All right. So, go ahead, Dave.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Douglas. Doug, go ahead, Doug.
This $220,000 cost is for remove, replace the whole entire foundation, correct?
Yes.
You have ample, this is a big lot, there's a lot of area that you can extend your building on a backside and cut back 10, 15 feet, 10 feet, what are the, the error is, what, eight foot?
Six feet.
Six foot, you can remove those six foot and that depth of the wall, 37 foot by six foot by six foot. Talk to, with me, I'm a civil engineer myself. Make your basement smaller, and what are the area that you're losing, extend on a backside, on the upper floors. You still get the same FAR, still get everything, and things will be corrected. It will not be that big of a cost. All right, that's what would be my suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
That, that's one solution. Doug, you have something?
Just to clarify, the, as, as the builder, you consider, I would imagine, none of this your fault, you were just following the survey, correct?
Correct.
So is your wall exactly precisely on that survey marking that Mr. Wu prepared?
Yes. And that's where the foundation location, which we do, after the superior walls are done, we do the foundation location, that's what it is.
So at that moment, when, I mean, the catalyst of doing that as-built foundation survey, that's when there was the, oh no moment, where everybody said, oh my gosh, this is wrong?
Correct, or like Four Fielding Place never came for starting a construction. Yeah, I mean, this is, so the reality here.
And was, and was that neighboring, maybe you can't answer this, but is that neighboring property doing construction? That's why they did the survey?
Exactly, so if this was coming like six months later, we would have been done. So I mean, this was a very honest, in my opinion, which I've seen, that we came to the town informing this, this situation. I've been very open on this, this is like something we have come here to the board to approve this. The reason is, we've been honest the same day, and we've been working very diligently with the township, and now we in front of the board, which is why to get this approved. I mean, there was no, no mistake from anyone here, that's how I can see this.
Well, it was a survey mistake. It was a survey mistake, right?
Whoever had done that survey came in, and this is how the.
But that's Mr. Wu, right?
Whoever did that initial, which I was not part of it, whatever, so I get involved when everything is ready, and we submit the paper to township. Right, so just to give a little background, in Jan, when we came to know, it was not because of the house been built by Eight Fielding Place. This was, the error was found because of Four Fielding Place. The owner sitting here, she came to the engineer that she wants to start a new construction. That's how the situation came, and we would have not come, or we would have not known this, this would not been here, we would not been here.
And then did, did this group that's testifying, you as the builder, Mr. Wu as the?
Engineer.
Engineer, did you go to the town and say, oh my gosh, we made a mistake?
Yes.
Or did someone else say, I think they made a mistake?
We, it was a mistake, it was something which I think we were very honest to let the town know that there is a problem.
But it was your idea to go to the town and report this, you self-reported this, basically?
Yes, we all self, the owner, the engineer, we all went to town. This would have been like, we would have not said anything, done, nobody would have known this. Would have happened in other countries, but if we didn't want to do this, that's what it is.
Anything else? Anyone else, any?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So, just to get a better idea, when your excavation started, you had stakes?
Correct.
And they were pinned out two feet this way, two feet that way?
Correct.
Now, lot number three, the one that's north, is there a fence that, that was existing there or no?
No.
No?
There's no fence.
So there was markouts two feet away, you started excavating, you poured your, your strip foundation and superior wall came in?
Correct.
And I'm looking at the original survey. Would you say that the most current, up-to-date site survey that you have is dated 9/30/2024?
Correct.
That's the most latest grading plan?
Should be the one which is approved by township, correct.
Okay, and here I see that there's some locations of some walls and setbacks that were changed. What's an explanation to that? Like the rear wall, originally called out for 26 feet, 26.7, and in reality, it's 27.4, so that's almost an eight inches difference. What are, what's the differences that were in the dimensions of the actual house?
There's a difference?
Yeah, there's a difference in the most latest foundation locations plan that we received compared to the one that the township has?
I'm gonna have no, we have not studied that, so I, I don't think so, that's.
Okay.
I mean, superior walls are pretty accurate in that terms.
I'm just trying to say, for example, if the lot, if the property, the existing foundation was the same what was proposed on here, the left dimensions are the same.
Correct.
From the, it looks like Fielding Place, 65.9, it's the same, the building footprint is the same, why are we six inch, six feet over?
Is there a six-foot solid vinyl fence on that side?
No fence.
The survey shows that there is a fence.
On the right side, no.
So wait, to my colleague, I just want to clarify what you're asking. So if I was looking at, at this, on the left side, it's accurate, but on the right side, it's six feet. So does that mean the whole house is, the FAR is all out of whack now too?
That's the question I'm asking.
The FAR, I mean, the property is very big, it's like 25,000 square feet, and the house is small compared to the property, it's just 4,000 square feet.
Right, but if you were off six feet on one side, wouldn't you then inherently be off six feet on the other side too? And the whole structure would just be shifted over?
I mean, on the left side, which is the main road, we have space there, yes. That's where the garage is, on the left side.
But are you saying that the, the as-built survey shows that the house is just six feet bigger, instead of it being shifted over?
Well, the ones that are, the plan that's prepared by Mr. Wu dated January 9th, 2025, it's depicting that the side yard, which will be the, the south side, 65.9 is the same. You have that 69, 65.9 dimension, you have the building, and then you have what's in question right now, which was supposed to be 16 feet, but that's now nine feet. So where's that difference? Is it in the building, or?
It must be, right?
That's what I'm.
Looks like the, the, the foundation contractor, precast concrete guy made a mistake. His building is much wider than what is shown.
Why is the, why is the left yard setback still the same? If your footprint would be the same, that doesn't make sense.
Right.
Why would not be same? What do you mean?
So you have your left side yard?
Yeah.
You have the frontage of the building and then you have the right hand.
We're gonna take a five-minute break, all right?
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're gonna resume?
Yes, sir. I, I, I think the confusion is probably as to what happened when the survey was corrected. Our planner is also an engineer who can probably explain it better because the house did not expand to get closer to the side yard. The survey moved the actual side yard boundary closer to the foundation. That's, that's what happened when they discovered the survey violation. That wouldn't change the size of the house at all. Unless there, unless there's something I'm missing.
All right, I have, I have a question.
Sure.
Mr. Wu, and this is for the builder. Mr. Wu testified, licensed surveyor, that it's standard operating procedure, once the foundation wall is up to perform a survey. Was that done?
Yes, the foundation location was done.
So when your foundation wall was up, the survey was done?
After the foundation, yeah, it's done. The foundation location was done by the engineer later, somewhere in December.
And this is a question, so that was based on Hoffman's survey?
That was done on Hoffman's survey, yes. Then four fielding place came in. Or the planner can answer that question. I don't know when the survey, what they did as an engineer, as a construction, like as a contractor. I was waiting for the foundation location to be submitted to township.
So again, the foundation wall, there was a survey performed when the foundation wall was up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have a question or a comment?
Go ahead, sure. Mr. Lopez, do you have the as-built provided from superior wall?
Yeah, I have it here. I was like.
Do they differentiate or do they match up with Mr. Wu's?
I mean, there will be one or two, but it's the township engineers who approve this.
Mr. Lopez, can you move the mic closer to you, please, and speak into it? Thank you.
So we submit this to township engineer and then they take a look at it and they approve it if there is a discrepancy into it.
Okay.
Yeah.
When, when did they submit it and when was it approved? What was the date of that?
No, it was not approved. I mean, we didn't submit it. And this is where, when the submission came in, this is where the situation came in. So with superior wall, as I said, we can, we go up until waiting for the backfill.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Anything? Okay. What else you have, Mr.?
I'm gonna call Laura Laitotin. She's our planner, who also is an engineer.
Thank you. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth said upon your glass?
I do.
And state your full name, please.
Laura Laitotin, T-O-T-T-E-N, Crest Engineering Associates, Millstone Township, New Jersey. I obtained my professional engineering license in 1983. It is still active. I obtained my planning license in 1986. It is still active. I have provided testimony before this board as an engineer, I think, right, planning? I think it was this board. If it wasn't, it was the planning board about a month ago. I also have provided testimony throughout Monmouth, Middlesex, and other towns in New Jersey.
We'll accept your qualifications.
Thank you.
You can proceed.
Thank you.
Ms. Totten, you were retained by the applicant to give planning testimony regarding this matter, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, you're also a licensed professional engineer, correct?
That's correct.
And you're familiar with the engineering and surveying aspects of this matter in preparing for your testimony, I assume, correct?
I am.
And you heard my explanation and knowing I'm not an engineer or a planner, as to what actually caused the violation? And that was, that does not involve any increase in the size of the house nor any increase or decrease in the setback to the other side where there is a rather large side, you are correct?
Correct.
Could you please explain to the board in probably better language than I could?
Yes, yes. So I have reviewed the plot plan and grading plan. I do have a copy here that was prepared by, by Mr. Wu. I have also reviewed the as-built drawing of the foundation. So I just wanted to.
We, we don't, excuse me, we don't, do we have that?
I can give this to you if you like. It's assigned in.
We don't have it. This was not submitted as a part of the application.
Yeah, it's, I'm just, I wanted to clarify the timeline because Mr. Wu is a great engineer and surveyor, but I think he's not as good a speaker as maybe I am.
Okay, can, if I can just have you hold a moment?
Yes.
You have, this is gonna be, what is this that you're looking at?
I am looking at a plot and grading plan prepared for eight fielding place. It is dated 7/26/24, sheet one of one.
Do we have that? No, you don't have it. I'm gonna ask that our board secretary show it to the board members and we take a moment. And we're gonna label this as A1.
May I just give a small timeline or do you wanna look at that first?
Please wait until they've had an opportunity to look at it.
Please note the location of the curb as it's relative to the curved property line.
Ma'am, you're gonna wait to say anything more until they've had an opportunity to look at it across the board, okay?
Where are the two different surveys that have been done?
What's the date of A1?
A1 is dated. July 26, 2024. Marked as a plot and grading plan prepared for eight fielding.
We're gonna take another break, a five-minute break. Okay, we're back.
So just for the record, Mr. Fletcher and I discussed off the record that perhaps there are additional documents that the board requires to see before they can make any kind of determination on this application. To that end, if Mr. Shire, you're in agreement that I'm gonna have the board list exactly what additional information they'd like to see? Is that acceptable?
Yes.
I don't know which board member wants to.
All right, so.
Go ahead, take a lead.
Yeah, go ahead, Deventer.
All right, so we need all the building construction documents, the permit plans, including foundations, including supreme precast wall, sharp drawings approved. And I also want to suggest something that they can put the cost together. If you remove that seven feet of walls, both sides, demo this wall, you can easily also build that wall with the CMU block. You know what I'm talking about, right? Eight-inch concrete block walls on that side and bring the foundation back. So all you can do, the cast-in-place concrete wall on that side, insert pregas. If you put the cost together for that, it not be $220,000, it would be probably $20, $30,000. Put that cost together as well. We need that, if need to be fixed.
Anything else? Anyone want to add to that? Go ahead.
I, I would just like the copies of the, the history of the survey. So I'd like to see the April 2024, the July 2024. And I, I understand there was a September survey as well that was the as-built. Whatever the documents, the variations of them as they changed.
Mr. Shire, just to emphasize, we need a timeline. Yes, sir. I understand that.
We've been talking about it, so just, you know, submit a timeline. Anything else?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would request the applicant provides the as-built from superior wall, as we mentioned.
The as-built from?
From superior wall. From the precast supplier. From the precast supplier.
Oh, okay.
Anything else? Okay.
Do we know what available dates are? Mr. Shire, how long do you think you'll need to prepare all the documents?
We can be ready well before the May meeting.
What date is the May meeting?
So we can either place them on the May 20th or July 17th. Those are the two we have. May 20th.
May 20th, okay.
No further notice?
Okay, we need a motion to carry this to May 20th, 2025.
Motion to carry to May 20th.
Second, roll call, please.
Mr. Chabra?
Yes, to the motion.
Mr. Serito?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes, to the motion.
Mr. Patel?
Yes, to the motion.
Mr. Devay?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Sadadhan?
Yes, to the motion.
Ambassador Gorman?
Yes, on the motion. Okay, so without further notice, there's not gonna be a notice. This is the notice, it'll be on May 20th for the public and anyone watching this. Okay, thank you. And that adjourns the meeting. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
All in.
Aye.